All right, let's get this special meeting started. This is a community discussion on the future of the Algenack Elementary School. Welcome, everybody, and thank you all for coming out tonight. It's great to see a full house for this. I think we're all pretty excited to hear ideas and talk about it, so how this is gonna work tonight. Mrs. Gersonberg has a presentation. She's compiled a lot of the ideas that came to her via email, Facebook, a lot of the ideas that she got, and then she has some ways for us to think about those ideas during her presentation. And then there'll be a point where anybody can get up to speak, you'll have five minutes to speak on the issue. You'll have the floor for five minutes, and then after that, we'll go into an open discussion. I think that is all. Please, out of courtesy of everybody being here to talk about the school, keep everything on topic to be school-related. If it's any other city council issues, please see one of us after the meeting or come to our next meeting and see us then. All right, Mrs. Gersonberg, are you ready?
I am. All right, thank you, Mayor Gillis. So we have presentation today on the future of Algenack Elementary School. So we'll start off with some school facts. The school building is about sixty-nine thousand square feet and it's on three point two acres. It is adjacent, right adjacent to the city-owned Smith Recreation Park, which is another one point five acres. We don't get a lot of taxes from this building. It's about thirty-four hundred dollars a year. Estimated demolition costs, which was prepared by an architect a few years ago, is between three hundred and fifty and five hundred thousand. There was some asbestos removed, but not all.
They can't hear you in the back.
I can. I can hear you.
Barely.
Barely. Some of the older ones can't. The older, I'm sorry.
Can you hear me now? So right now, there is a picture on the screen of the school property. So outlined in yellow, that is the school property, the three point two acres. The blue outline is the Smith Recreation Park, which is the one and a half acres. And here's another food for thought. You can't really see it up there. But, you know, when we, now that we own that whole L-shaped property, you could possibly vacate the road right there, right there with that Washington, that's in front of where the old administration building is, and vacate Clay alongside the Smith Recreation Field and create an even bigger parcel. So just some food for thought there. This is a layout of the school. So as you can see on the right side of the screen, the green, those are the classrooms. There is a courtyard in the middle, the gym, in the middle of the classrooms. There is a gym in the middle, that's that aqua blue square sort of in the middle. And then to the left of that is, that was the administration building, and those are offices. So that is the current layout of the school building. And some history to start off with. The original building was constructed around nineteen sixty-three. There was an addition to the east side added later on, followed by the Board of Education building. In two thousand and eleven, there were significant interior renovations completed. In two thousand and fifteen, that was the last year it was used as a school. In December of two thousand and seventeen, it was donated to the National Christian Foundation and listed for sale for seven hundred and forty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars. Twenty twenty-one, seven years later, the property was still for sale. City Council hired an architect to complete a feasibility study, hoping to encourage private development. In October of twenty twenty-three, the school had been unsold now for seven years, and it went to auction on November twenty, November thirteenth. Private investors were saying that the cost to develop it was just too high. So in November of twenty twenty-three, the city council authorized the city manager to participate in the auction. And in November of twenty twenty-three, the city successfully purchased the property for a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, closing on December eighteenth. In January of twenty twenty-four, the city sought input from the community regarding the future of the school and the property. There was over a hundred and thirty comments received about the future of this property. So today at the meeting, our purpose is to review the comments and suggestions provided by the community members regarding the future of the school and the adjacent property. General direction, keep in mind as we go through this presentation, should we keep the gym or demolish the gym? Should we keep some community rooms? Should we turn classrooms into housing? Should we add community parking? Should we remove the skate park and build a new one? And please keep an open mind. I have some quotes here. "Those who can't change their minds can't change anything," from George Bernard Shaw. "It's only afterward that a new idea seems reasonable. To begin with, it usually seems unreasonable." And you have to change your thinking if you desire to have a future different from your present. And this one last quote, "We all live in a city that we didn't build." Those of us sitting here today did not build most of what is here. We didn't pass most of the rules and ordinances that we follow. All we can do now is to work together for change and a better future. So I'm gonna start off with some unlikely options. One of the options that was suggested was demolish the school and build a swimming pool. So Algenack already has a pool at Lyons Field that was built in nineteen fifty-seven, and it closed in two thousand and twenty due to water loss and safety concerns. The city has obtained seven hundred thousand dollars in grant funds to help pay for the new pool, funds that cannot be transferred to another location. Right now, we are preparing to go out for bids for that swimming pool at Lyons Field. Move City Hall and the Fire Department. Moving would create empty spaces on the riverfront. We have vacant retail commercial space available now, and no one is in a hurry to fill them. The City Hall offices would not be hard to relocate, but building a new fire station would be well over two million dollars. A motel with an indoor water park, or a casino, or a Gibraltar Trade Center, or a resort hotel. There is no room for these options. We only have three point two acres. For example, Great Wolf Lodge was built on over seventy acres, and even a small casino needs ten to twenty acres. Another suggestion was demolish Algonquin Place, demolish all private property on the riverfront and start over. Create an outdoor mall, shopping, and condos. That would be very expensive. So you'd have to buy the property, the businesses, demolish all the buildings, relocate all the Algonquin Place residents, sell the vacant property, wait for it to be developed, and then how do you force a developer to build what the city wants? But I wanted to provide everybody a picture of, you know, comments that we were getting. So we had some comparisons. We had a number of people say, "Let's be like a senior center, like Chesterfield Marine City, a plaza like downtown St. Clair." "Let's be like Washington Life Center in Marine City. Let's be like the Eddie Center in St. Clair. Let's be like the Marine City Marketplace. Let's be like the Wrigley Center for Aera." Now we have other people that said, "Let's be Algenack. Keep our small-town atmosphere. If you want big-town amenities, move to one. Stop trying to be like other cities and do something unique for Algenack." So no matter how popular you think your idea is, somebody is not going to like it. So this is just a brief overview. In two thousand and twenty-one, we had a school feasibility study done, and that was ideas to encourage development. The purpose of that study was really to encourage a private developer to come in and take a look at the property. And so a lot of the suggestions had to do with, you know, tearing down the school completely and turning it into homes with garages and duplexes, townhomes, apartments. Now that we, the city owns the property, and we have a larger footprint to work in, the focus has sort of changed into more of a community focus. So these are some of the suggestions that we received for community use, which that was what most of them were about, was a community use for the school property. So these are some of the outdoor suggestions. An area for local plants to play, batting cages, a Christmas tree lot, community garden, a covered pavilion for ice skating, a double Ferris wheel, drive-in theater, eastern market-type pavilion for indoor and outdoor uses, farmer's market, fire pits in an outdoor plaza area, a go-kart and motorcycle track, a gun range, an inflatable park, outdoor workout space, a skate park replaced with a new plaza-style skate park, a pump track for bikes or rollerblades, roller skating, and volleyball courts. So this is just some ideas for food for thought. In the upper left-hand corner is an outdoor pavilion that's been built in Auburn, Michigan. They use it in the winter for covered ice skating. They use it for roller skating. They use it for basketball. They use it for music in the park. And as you can see, they use it for farmer's market. And then, this is a different location, but outdoor fire pits, outdoor fire pits is part of your community space. This is an inflatable park. This is in Massachusetts. This is a plaza-style skate park. And this is a community garden. So these are some suggestions for community use indoor. An art center for classes and events, a boarding facility for pets, childcare center, a community center, which, there's asterisks there, funding may be available to help with the community center, an education center, like partnering with local colleges and having classes there, an event space, like for weddings, a gym for sports teams to use pickleball leagues, an indoor walking track, a learning center for computer math, ESL, outdoor education, offices for county services, retail stores and classrooms, senior citizen center, service dog training center, small business incubator, a teen room with study areas and gaming stations, a veterinarian office, and a year-round flea market. So this is some pictures of a, some communities in their community centers, they have gaming rooms for teens to hang out and study, or art classes, and then here's a picture of indoor pickleball, which could happen in the gym. A lot of people suggested indoor pickleball. Here's some community use sort of other suggestions. Add fifty plus diagonal parking spaces along Smith Street. As you all know, parking is very challenging in Algenack, especially when we have events in the community. Build homes or condos, demolish the school and leave the property vacant. A dispensary, that we need a parking lot. We need a restaurant with observation deck to view the river. Give away a parcel of waterfront land somewhere in Riverfront Park to developer who will build the restaurant. Make the school cafeteria a restaurant. Use shipping containers to create retail stores. Turn classrooms into apartments or mini self-storage units. The idea about turning classrooms into apartments, we have recently been approached by two developers who are interested in turning the classrooms into apartments. And they are talking about one, two, three, or even four stories of apartments there. There is money available from the state to do that, and in turn, they would also be able to use some of that money to remodel the gym and have it available for public use, which would be a bonus for the city, because they would put a lot of their money into making that happen. This is a picture of a school that was turned into a housing facility. Very similar. All the classrooms were turned into apartments. This is Transfiguration in Detroit. This is an idea, this is a company out of Traverse City. Those shipping containers that you see, they are easily pulled by a truck, and they're unfolded, they're temporary, and people set up like pop-up stores and pop-up bars. That was a suggestion, not only for the school, Smith Field area, but also a suggestion for the Riverfront Park in the summertime to do something like this. So then let's talk about retail. We've got numerous comments about turning the school into a shopping retail market.
Sorry.
We have retail and commercial space open now, and no big or small businesses in a hurry to fill them. There is a visibility problem for any retail at the school. It's too far from M twenty-nine. The school was for sale for seven years. If the developer thought there was money to be made with retail, they would have purchased the building and created retail spaces. Amazon. Amazon has chained retail proper. And small shops cannot survive with just local support. We need to attract people to the area. Other comments, we need something that brings people to town all year long. We need more than just a community center to bring people to town. Moving municipal offices is a waste of money when we already have vacant spaces on M twenty-nine. Do not spend any taxpayer dollars. Get grants. We need things for kids to do. We need to be a destination for visitors. We need affordable housing. Algonquin Place, Rolling Brook are all, all have long wait lists. And that is the conclusion of my presentation. You're done.
Thank you. All right, at this point, we will open it up to public discussion, and anybody who'd like to come up and speak to the crowd and to the council, you'll have five minutes to speak.
I'll speak. Okay, I'm Laura. I moved out here in two thousand and nineteen. I'm a glass artist. I brought some of my stuff. This is an evening cloak. So I paint. I can pass it around. You guys can open it up and look in it. I paint on glass. I blow glass with a torch. This is cooking glass that you can actually use, and you can make stirsticks, you can make all sorts of things. So this is Pyrex glass. It will still break if I drop it, but it will not explode. You can put this in your dishwasher, but of course, if I drop it on the floor, it will break. There's some implosions in some of those. Done with the torch. I don't have a furnace. I have bad legs. I just started walking that tomorrow. This is fused. This is safe. You can eat off of this. This is food-safe glass that has been painted in and baked in. So this has been in the kiln three times. I can teach fusing. Here's another fuse piece. This will actually glow in the dark. So I can, I can put ash in stuff. We can fuse it in stuff. I can teach all this out here. And I will tell you guys, Detroit has a blow fest every year, huge blow fest, and they donate money. They do, people come from all over the state to do this blow fest. And this Glass Roots will then donate money to Detroit schools to bring art back into the schools. They donate thousands. I think they donated one year two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And we can do something like that out here, too. That school could be a multipurpose for everybody. We can put in service dogs. We can have the gardens. We could have, we could do a blow fest. We could do all sorts of things, and people will bring in their kilns, and they will bring in their furnaces and all of that. And they will even let, you know, people blow some glass. They'll, you know, you'll get liked and experience of that. They're pretty, I know a lot of glass artists, a ton. So that's my take on it.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just have a question. And we've got an estimate of what the cost of repairing that building, or are you sure?
Not discussed.
No. Tell them, please. I know we're at price. I'm hearing it now, three hundred to five hundred thousand. We don't have any idea what's the cost of repairing it.
Oh, we have to determine what the use is gonna be first, before we go out and determine how much that is gonna cost. So the only concrete number that I can get was if we were to tear the whole thing down, that would be an estimate. Until we figure out where we're going, we'll give us that estimate.
It might cost more. It might cost more. It's probably gonna cost more than that to fix it than it is gonna be to tear it down. So you gotta look at, you already have two, three million.
We have to keep in mind that asbestos is in the building, water hikes, electric, feelings that have been broken down, things like that.
Did you guys see him there?
And there is, I would think, randomly. Keep looking, seeing what's there.
I'm Gerbert Kelly. I moved out here in twenty twenty. I'm trying to be involved with the community as much possible. Duck races and helping out with things like that. In my background.
Can't hear you. Can't hear you.
In my background, I used to run a real estate management company. It was small, but we took no interest rebuilding it. Generally, for where we were at, it was turning around properties. Now, what I could say is that I think there's a way to accomplish multiple goals with this property other than just community center, just housing, or just something else, because ultimately, it's gonna boil down to tax revenue. And I hate to put it like that, but if you turn it to just the community, then the burden falls on the community to maintain it, right? So there's gotta be a way where we can mix-use this property to bring in businesses, bring in some tax revenue to help pay so we can at least negate the cost of maintenance and maybe make some profit to put elsewhere. So I think for the building itself, it would be worth an evaluation on what you said as far as salvagability and grants for salvaging. I think there's ways that the structure itself could be saved or reconfigured as a capacity that might be more beneficial for developers to come in. I think the concept of real, retail, although Amazon, obviously, I think for small towns, there's a misconception, right? People that do things out of the house, out of their barn, Etsy, things like that, they could have a space. It could be shared. It could be mixed-use. It could be something where the community is involved. You know, there's a profit sharing. It could be a million, things like that. There could also be small restaurants, right? It doesn't have to be one big restaurant. You could have, like Traverse City has, food court. They have food trucks, right? They have an acre and a half, right off downtown. They have eight or ten food trucks. They're full-time permanent, right? There's all these options that could be evaluated where it's not gonna change the city, right? I grew up in a small town that went big. I've seen many of those, right? I spent time living in Traverse City as well. I see what happens, okay? We moved out here because we love it. We want it to stay small, want it to stay community. But I think there's a way to bring in some mixed-use development with some small local retail, possibly some restaurants, also incorporate some ideas like fire pits, maybe the pavilions, things like that, because, again, all great ideas, but if there's nothing to draw people to the fire pits and pavilion, why are people gonna come? If there's food trucks, or if there's restaurants, and small retail, there's, you know, something there, then it would draw people into it. And you have to see the festivals, the boardwalk, right? That would help in turn feed, I guess, call it a mall, indoor, whatever you wanna call it, those festivals, help feed people to those businesses and vice versa. Just increases everything, increases tax revenue, keeps a small community, keeps the community focused. But I think there's a way to do it, and I think that should be evaluated. I think start maybe salvagability of what's there. Valuation plus grants, because there are electrical, there is water, I understand all of that. I went into asbestos houses. I went into, we got sold a house that they didn't tell us was a bed lab. And yes, my partner and I ourselves had a remediation on it to be able to salvage it, okay? So I understand its cost, and I think there's a way that we can entice businesses, because up to this point, I've thrown a lot of interest in the waterfront, but I think because it's too big of a project for one person to take on with community support, smaller segmentations of possibly big salvaging these empty buildings, I think it'd be great, some buzz about it for some developers. Just my thoughts.
Thank you.
That's right, I speak.
Just a couple of things. First of all, I'd hate to correct somebody, but it was in the nineteen fifties when the elementary was built, not sixty. That's when the high school was built. But this is a golden opportunity, this building. The tear down, I mean, I grew up in Algenack when urban renewal came through, and that was a travesty. And I think we did the same thing here. It would be another travesty. We have this building. We have a gym. So many different things that this could be used for us. A community center for sports events. I know as a minister now, and we have a couple in here, too, just the things that we could use. But it's all about kids, too. We have nothing here for kids, absolutely nothing. And we always went white, but we have an opportunity to get so many entities here in this community involved with that and partner with the city of Algenack to make this a community event. And you see, when we do the little things here, the art fairs, the Pickle Tournament, those things bring a ton of people in. I see a campus marsh, basically, you know, that same kind of an idea of, you know, you had the pavilion like you mentioned, and the, you know, the ice skating, the different things. You know, our MAEDA, they knock it out of the park every weekend in the summer with their flea markets. You know, I like what the gentleman said, bring in some restaurants or little things that could be there. That would bring people in. But, man, we gotta keep this building. You know, I could see maybe a little bit, hey, we gotta get rid of this, but whatever. But that core, that building, with that gym, you got the cafeteria that was already done just before they sold it. So it's, we gotta keep it, and that's how I, I see this area. I love Algenack. I grew up in, I'm a parent, a longtime Algenack people here. We need to keep this. This is who we are. This is part of our legacy. This is part of our history, and we need to find a way to use that to better this community, to make it unique, is what we need to do. And we have an opportunity to have that here and to make it unique. So I'm, I'm all for whatever we need to do, and I know we'll stand behind you. Tearing it down is not the answer.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Something I want to get. Thirty years ago, I brought my children out here, and both of my children are Algenack elementary. Seven years ago, this has been a travesty for the taxpayers, past and present. Yes, taxpayers, we paid for that school, and it got sold out to none of us. We've got a grand opportunity. We have it back now. So for seven years, we've all kinda sat holding our breath, wondering what was gonna happen. What I've heard a lot, as someone who once sat on the Downriver Recreation Commission, is there's nothing for our kids. We used to utilize the old Lions Club. That was henceforth poor down, and we put it in homes. So I think there's a grand opportunity to put a community center in, that we could do some senior activities, that we could do some of these flea markets and a variety of things. I think it could be multifunctional, now whether the building is habitable and able to be brought back up or porch funded. But in the meantime, we don't need something that large for a community center. We could possibly take part of that property, sell it off. Sell it off, make it a residential, get some homes built, then you're covering another aspect, and you're also bringing tax dollars in. That helps put that money back in taxpayers' money. It helps recoup some of this money that past and present taxpayers lost. But they're also receiving something. I've heard a lot about the urban gardening. So there, people are bringing their families out here, and yet we're not, we're not offering after anything. So I think we need to keep that in mind, that that once belonged in essence to the taxpayers, and it'd be nice for the taxpayers to get something back. That's it. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right.
The problem was, the school should have gave it to the city of Algenack. Is what it should have been done. That's what it should have been done.
The deed on the school was restricted. So when they, when they closed it down, they had to return it to play township. That's what the Smith family directed it for. That's why I went to play township.
And it was supposed to be always used for kids.
Well, but now we, now we, we have the building, so now it's time to talk about the future together. We can't change the past, so council, what's, how do we open up to council?
Well, we've talked about, you know, I love the gazebo idea. I think that's great, but I wonder if that could be turned into something very similar to basically an indoor gazebo. If it rains, music in the park, let's go in the gym. You know, Lori, Lori Bernie, Lori wants to teach how to make glass stuff. Let's go in the gym and all that. Not sure we can keep it all. Some things we need to keep in mind is everything is expensive and costs money. I like hearing about developers maybe taking over part of that and building things so that we can use that money to support that, because if we're gonna keep part of that building, which, you know, I agree with you, this gonna cost money. Are we willing to pay for that? And that's the thing we have to keep in mind. Are we willing to pay? Might even be a little bit more in taxes to have a community center, because somebody's gotta run it. So, now you have another city employee that will be paying money to, and our budget is very slim as it is, you know? And so, I wanna hear from you. You don't have to say it at this meeting, but you know where to find me, you know how to text and all that. Are we willing to pay that extra money every year, even if it means maybe a little bit more taxes to do these wonderful things that we're hearing? I would hope the answer's yes, but just keeping it real, fire pits cost money. Maintaining the fire pits costs money. Running a rec center costs money. So, please keep that in mind. We've done so much good in Elginak, and I think this is a great opportunity to do even more. I wanna hear more ideas. Come on up and talk to us.
Please.
Or do you wanna speak for your seat? You've done as well.
That's fine, I'm halfway up. My name's Seth Carr. I've lived in the area for about three years now. I've always liked the charm of the Elginak area. The water is, a lot of cities kill for this area. I kinda wanted to listen to some of the things. I had my own ideas. We're talking about the kids. That's huge. There's not a lot of options for the kids out here. I have a stepdaughter that's in Hillsborough right now, and I always talk to her about what she wants to do, and I don't force her to do anything, but I just like her to think about that. So, with the big shortage in the trades that we have now.
Yes.
That's huge. If I, personally, if I could do it all over again, I did graduate from college, I would, I would go to the trade at eighteen and second one in college. Just hindsight for me. I think it's important to at least give kids the opportunity to explore the trades. And this may be a partnership with the school district, and I know money's involved and all kinds of things are involved, but it just, this isn't brainstorming for me. Maybe use a portion or all of that as like a tech-add trades-type training center that is either connected with the school or it's outside of school totally. And money is the issue, right? There's always an issue. Maybe we find some union halls or businesses that are willing to lease a space in there or fund these trainings and teach kids, you know, electrical, HVAC, all those things. And like I said, it doesn't have to be the whole building, but that may be a good, a good use. And then as for the outdoor space, I don't really have much on that, but attracting kids. Like skate park school, I, I was a skateboarder when I was a kid, and there was, there was always a lack of places to skateboard. But I don't really see many kids skating there, so I think there could be something better for that. I don't have the answer for it. But I think something focusing on the trades, trades in part in that area or on that property would be, would be something that others would think about, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just so you know, we already have a Secular County reset.
Where's that?
In Secular.
Yeah, I'm saying like in this area.
Meeting, you could partner with them to use the facility.
Yeah, my biggest thing, and I'm not trying to stomp here, was our areas, everyone says, oh, that's so hard to get to. Our area is so hard to get to, which is really not. I don't think it is, coming from a town township area. I like, you know, the drive out here. But transportation, you know, the closer we can have it for the kids in this area, the better, but that is a good point. There's, I'm sure there's plenty of organizations to try to partner with.
Yes, I agree.
And they probably get some kind of write-off advantage for it, too.
Right. Yep.
And taking away all their shop classes.
Yeah.
And all those things. I don't know if you've ever been to Sun City? And in Sun City, they have the big rec area, they have a place in place, all that athletic things they want, but they have shops. So, these people that are retired, who used to like to work with wood or metal or all, they have, they have shops within their community center. They do, and they can sell things. But I like the idea where these kids could come in and maybe somebody would do a training.
The other reason I thought of that is because I've heard, I've had plenty of friends that grew up in the area. And the history of this town, you know, it all began Chris Crap.
Right.
Donating wood to the school district is what I heard back in the day, and they used to build kit boats and kit boat.
Right.
It's, I mean, I really, I really fire glass now, and it costs a ton of money, but trade, boat building is a trade, you know? Autobody is a trade, electrical, all that stuff is shortage. I work in the insurance industry, body shop tech, there's not a pay tax, stuff like that, you know? There's money in the trade.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, money, absolutely.
Oh, exactly.
I just, I keep thinking about how Chris Crap, they used to feed their own, their own area up, and then they did work for Chris Crap.
Yeah.
So, I don't.
That's a new one. I like that. See, that's, that's the cool thing about this, is we're gonna be able to hear new ideas that we hadn't heard or read on Facebook.
We can just discuss. So, if anybody feels, so, we're open.
Yeah, this, this isn't.
This is a discussion, it's not really, at this point, we're discussing.
You're not gonna do it my way?
If we do convert the classrooms into a senior, senior thing, the developers have to do a multi-level. The problem with that is, is that slab is too thin. It won't support that way. So, you're looking at either demoing it down enough to lay a new slab or mudjacking it up. And that's gonna be expensive for the developers, so I don't know if the developer's gonna be willing to do that.
Yeah, does, you know, that, I guess, there could be some way, if they're interested, they investigate on their own? Mr. Chris Crap?
Yes, it's, the developer would have to get a structural engineer to say what they would need to do with that concrete to see if it could hold, one, two, three, four. That would be up to the developer to do that.
My, my, my understanding is ordinance has only two stories? For fire reasons? Is there a limit to the height that they could build apartment buildings here?
Whatever's in ordinance, but we have three-story buildings already.
Yep.
But, I mean, you can't have a ten-story building, can you? I mean, the fire trucks, or am I wrong in thinking that? I thought there was a limit in the ordinance. Am I wrong?
Probably is some sort of.
I know there was at one time.
Bad day, but that may not be true now.
Yeah, I know there was at one time.
We can run it by the city lawyer.
It should be right on the website anyways, I would think.
No, if we were to take a poll, this is, does everybody seem like they want to look at restoring the building?
Yes.
Yes.
In some way.
We need to evaluate, I have somebody go in and evaluate what is damaged to the building, so we can see what's gonna.
Can we put, can we?
What we have to handle.
Well, of course.
Few of us, few of us, we walked through the building with county officials and a couple contractors and looked at feasibility of doing some things under the county umbrella, and they never came back. As far as I know, they've never responded after walking through there. Contractors thought the old shop out of there on the south side was not good and questioned the classrooms, but the gym area looks quite sturdy.
How damaged is the floor?
Yeah, yeah.
The gym, the gym floor was actually replaced in two thousand and eleven, and it's no longer wood. It's, uh, uh, it crept.
A deposit.
Yeah, it's kind of, yeah, like a vinyl.
Yeah, I knew, I knew past Christchurch was no.
Some, some kind of deposit.
Yeah, 'cause it used to be bad, 'cause it would always warp.
Yes, because the moisture in the building changes. It says Semco on pole meter, there's no heat in the building, so that would destroy a wood floor.
Yeah, there's no.
That's not what it is.
I know that when we were there, the ceilings are, a lot of the ceilings have come down. I imagine the pipes and electricity are in terrible shape, too, from what I saw.
The building official believes that the building is structurally sound, and so does the architect. Yes, there is some damage there to ceiling tiles, there's some, there's some leaks on the roof, but, but the architect and the building official both believe that the building is structurally sound and can be renovated.
What did the architect say about the corner of Fruit and Secular Boulevard that is dropping? So, where the?
The old Board of Education?
Well, it was one of the two least office spaces on the outside. If you look, if you walk by the brick building, someone has already tried tuck pointing the, the brick, because it's been collapsing on that corner. It's been pulling away.
That would all be evaluated depending on what the, what the potential used is. Architect, architect did not specifically jack that particular corner.
Okay.
You could always utilize, though, as a builder, and you could always utilize the school section, the newer section, and tear some of the older stuff down. And if you're talking about doing like that kind of stuff, this post-frame construction, that's way cheaper than it would be to, you know, rebuild the, you know, the whole school section, you know? I mean, you tear down the areas that are no good, and then, you know, then put the post, a post-construction though in there, and they could do all the activities like they said in that area. It could be multi-use.
See, and that's, that's the whole thing. I keep thinking, the multi, the multi-use is, is. I, I keep thinking that is what it.
Not to live.
It seems to be at a couple of different levels, it's mixed use.
Because ideally, the best idea would be to keep the gymnasium and the cafeteria for community center use. And then figure out what to do with the rest of the building and property.
And maybe private, our private-public partnership?
Yes.
A lot of that's been added on. I mean, the original elementary was fifty-four. And then that, I forget the year where they added on to.
Eighty-four.
Yeah.
Yep.
They added on to make it even bigger, the library and all that stuff.
It was after they tore down the, after they tore down the whole high school.
Yep.
Yes. Eighty-six, I think, when they tore down the Gilbert Junior High.
So, am I?
I like the idea of mixed use. I mean, we can, it seems to be like the best of both worlds, where we can keep that gym, and then we get what is sorely needed for kids out here. And then, work with, and, and work with outside developers to bring in and make it to where we're gonna get some money, tax money, revenue money, that brings it into the city.
Or even, or even have the city lease it up.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a win-win going that route.
Yes.
I, I, I know that we need stuff for kids here. Need some indoor stuff for kids here. I mean, Clayton Shins got, you know, they got the pickleball, they got all this. There's not, there's not anything indoor.
They don't need a big park here. They've got one there.
Yeah, they, they.
Well, we already have a couple parks, too.
That gym, I don't, I know everybody in it, but I don't know how big it is, how many hoops are in there or what, but I know, as a former wrestler, I know this wrestling is exploding right now, the sport.
Yes, yes.
There's tournaments everywhere. You could, it just, there could be wrestling tournaments, multiple wrestling tournaments a year, kind of money.
Yep.
They pay to use it, basketball tournaments, AAU, stuff like that. Pickleball tournaments, if it's a synthetic floor, a composite floor, then you don't have to worry as much about beating it up with a different kind of traffic or different, too heavy of a ball. So, pickleball, things like that, it just sounds like that gym could be used for multiple like, or multiple tournaments or events.
Because you can't get into the high school.
Yeah.
There's so many.
You could do encourage vendors to come in, or think. Yeah, you could. Vendors vendors, you make money that way.
Well, I think the gym's an important part.
There's no, that's why we're here. There's no idea off the table.
Right.
I think the food trucks are a great idea, too, for like when you have, like when we do the concerts in the park thing and all that kind of stuff.
Right, something to tie into.
To tie in with the downtown, and we get the food trucks in there.
You have the gym, you can do, you can continue, you can do concerts in the winter, do one, do one a month. You know, we all love getting together for concerts.
Most of them still on the stage.
Yeah. I'm just throwing an idea out there.
See, that's for the bonuses, this helps get a direction of where to focus. Because, yeah, everyone's saying, well, they bought it, they're gonna plan it. Well, yeah, and if we do anything, it's gonna be a whole bunch, well, why'd they do that? Why'd they do that? This is, you know, and this is.
You're always gonna have trackers in the face.
And this is the way to get everybody, everybody gets to give us.
It's better than letting the opportunity slip by and school would've gotten bought by someone else.
I agree with you. We could not let this opportunity go.
That's right.
Right, and we just can't, I mean.
Every single one of us are in the driver's seat. For seven years, we, we had a, we had somebody from Georgia telling us what was gonna happen here in Elginak. But now we have a room full of seventy people that are in the driver's seat who are gonna determine the future of that building.
And I hope that helps you guys see the excitement that we have.
That's why, that's why we're doing.
Yes, and so there's gotta be where, what we do, you see the excitement of a community who wants something for the community.
Thank you.
Yes, you're, past your, sorry.
No, go ahead.
You're absolutely correct, because I, so many times on Facebook, we get, oh my goodness, people complaining. I'm glad to see so many people happy that we got that floor, now we wanna do something with it.
It's like I had said before that, you know, we want people to come here and invest money here. And, like I had said before, I'm gonna drive around. That vacant building is going to be something that sticks out to me if I'm thinking about bringing something that's bringing my livelihood. And what I think that getting something done with that is a start. And we need a start.
There we go.
And I think that's, for us to be able to get this property was, was, it was, it's a start. And it was awesome. We are gonna get. We can't, we don't, yeah, we can't, we can't buy businesses, private old businesses on the riverfront. We can't do it. We can do something with this.
You can have the greatest product in the world, but if people don't know about it, they're not coming.
Yep. And we've got a, we, this is a start. And to see everybody here that's, that smiles on their faces and we get to do something. You have no idea how awesome it is.
You know, the best part is, no matter what we do with it, it will be an improvement. No matter what the rush we go, it's an improvement.
Just not to see that when I walk through my dining room, because it's like right there. But having you guys here means the world. It really does.
Absolutely. Does anybody have anything else, any other viewpoints?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I really like the concept of a trade school for the kids.
Yes.
That would be a big draw. There's nothing like that around here. They would be sending their kids from all these small towns, because college is not for everybody.
Right.
But trade school would give them something to make money, raise a family. I think that's an awesome idea. I really, I really like that.
I just wanna add to what I was saying originally. Again, focusing on what Elginak has, the marine industry, marine industry, I mean, we're surrounded by water, right? If the trade thing did happen, marine technology could be part of that. With companies like Walstrom buying Carver Club, and a lot of these big marines coming in, they could potentially help make that a reality. Exactly, it's hard to get a boat again, it's hard to get a firehouse.
Yes, I.
If you're looking at the people moving in to an area, look at what they offer. If you look at, I graduated in seventy-five with two hundred and some kids. What are they graduating now, a hundred and five?
Yes.
Yeah. So, to get this community, wow, I wanted to.
Can I say something about skilled trades? Yes, I currently own a manufacturing company. That is the biggest need we have. We do machining, we do fabrication, we do welding. We're talking the old apprenticeship style of equipment work. Now, that said, I don't wanna be negative about it, but the hurdles in getting something like that going, probably not the best suitable property for that project. Because I can get robotics companies, I can get, I can get equipment to start that. The problem is the cost of having somebody who knows how to train people in all these fields would outweigh what it'd be worth, because somebody's in the foot mill. That's why all these high school programs are gone. I went through Romeo High School, we had the best machine shop probably in the country. I went to VICA, I went to MIT, I went to States, Nationals, you name it. It's gone. It's there, but it's really gone.
Yep.
Okay, so the money's dried up for it. Yes, there's programs for STEM, but that type of stuff, it's. Okay, so the money's dried up for it. Yes, there's programs for STEM, but that type of stuff, it's, I don't think that's the, the right project there for, just from my experience in it. We're at the point where so desperate, we are training people, apprenticeships, all ground up in our building, and that's cheaper than trying to do something like that outside of our own building.
Thank you.
With my trade, I'm willing to bring in my entire studio. And I can tell you, it's a pretty big studio. I have five kilns. I'm willing to bring in my glass, and I'm willing to donate my time to do it. But my glass supplies would have to be, I would have to be refunded on that. My kilns and the other stuff, that's, it's, it's fine, it's different, but my glass, where you make the product, I would have to be reimbursed.
I think a positive way to look at it.
On the glass part.
It's, um, you know, we all got good ideas, some work, some don't, some you try and say, ooh, that didn't work, some you're like, no way it's gonna work, and it ends up working good. Let people make an effort and try, um, and, and take it from there. Just to recap, what I'm hearing is. People are really interested in keeping that gym and possibly the cafeteria, and then using that gym and cafeteria for community events. Or especially focused on, if possible, kids. Is that kind of a good way to summarize it?
Yes.
Okay, I, y'all get it.
When you were talking about, you know, running a recreation center, and you're gonna hire somebody, it costs money, but after the, the dissolution of the DRC. Um, since Algonack really has no longer had any formal recreational programs. Correct me if I'm wrong, but are we not missing out on county recreational dollars that we've now been passing off since that all occurred?
I, I, I don't know, that'd be up to, uh.
Good question.
I think there's always grants for some things. Some grants are harder to get than others. I just wanted to put it out there so that everybody knows, it, it's, nothing is free in this world. And things are gonna cost a couple dollars, so when you hear.
But there are some really great grants out there.
And our city manager is very good at getting grants. She's already got in seven hundred thousand dollars for the swimming pool, let alone the other grants we've got, and which are too many to list. So of course, that, that's, that's her job. She'll, she'll try to find grants. I, I just wanted to keep it real, that, you know. And guess what? It's not gonna be done tomorrow. It's gonna take.
Yeah.
A day or two, because there's engineers involved, there's possible demolition involved, there's, um, there's a DEQ, they call it now, to, to, for the environment, all those things take time.
Took us some years. So we at least keep in mind that there are some families that are in the area, that own a visual district, that don't have access to internet or technology like computers, so. Something like that, like a even small, a small tech area for kids after school would keep them out of trouble and allow them to be able to do stuff. Plus, people can come in and teach tech-based programs or education in the same room. You know, we have that available at the library, and people don't, people don't use it. We even have Wi-Fi that you can. They have, they have programs in the library where they use it, and people can teach on the library.
That's a good point, that's a good point.
As time almost passed, you would go in the library, and computers would all be used, and there's then less and less use. And there's more computers open, uh, and, and I don't know for a reading.
Ask the teenage youth, you'll get, you'll get a answer.
It's the phone usage.
Yep.
And they're going there, they'll tell you why, you just gotta be willing to listen to them.
Oh, I see a.
So when, when are we, when are we gonna get started with a movement on this?
Well, tonight, today was the first, was the direction, we're looking for direction for the community.
Okay.
So that's what, I think tonight, we're gonna, it seems to me, I own it. The direction is part of the building, is community use.
So then.
And we're not gonna make this, this nothing official.
Well, yeah, can we get a plan?
Yeah, like, what kind of plan, like, are we gonna contact the DEQ? No, they gotta start somewhere.
Hang on.
Here's the thing, what this, what this does is, it gives these ideas, and it then gives the city manager. To where she, it gives her a direction of where she can go, who she's gotta look to, to move to the next step.
And what, with the, how much is our thoughts and plans gonna cost?
We don't, we don't know.
We don't know. So all of that has to all be all figured out. And it's just gonna take a year or two.
Okay, alright, so let's just, let's all recap real quick here. We got everybody together today because we were, we're looking for community input. The seven of us can't do it alone, the seven of us need all of you. So that's why we're looking for direction. The direction I think we got tonight was that most people in, in attendance want the gym. Am I wrong?
Right.
Yep.
Yes, we want the gym and the cafeteria.
The cafeteria. And mixed use?
Yes.
If we, if we needed to fund it?
Yep.
Is that, I mean, am I wrong on what?
Yeah.
I mean, so though, all of that sounds, sounds like, but.
A community area.
Right.
Yeah.
So is that the direction you were looking for this evening, Mrs. Gersonberg?
Um, yes, I think, I think what we're getting from the meeting is what you said, that people wanna keep the gym, they want there to be community space that can, can be used for our classes and different things in the community. And they are willing to get housing on the classroom side, for example, if we can help fund it, return some dollars to the taxpayers. Um, and, and some population there with, um, and also that it's really important to bring kids in, and have things for kids to do. So look at the pavilion, the ice skating, can use for farmer's market and all sorts of events, look at us, we, you know, moving the skate park, doing something nice for the kids. Look at, including the community room, maybe spaces for teens, you know, um, but, but it's all a lot about help, having a place for the kids to go and for things for them to do, right?
And the, the, the main thing from this meeting is that city manager was able to say, this is what she's hearing. So now she can get a direction, move to, because we don't know, she's gonna be able to get what this is gonna cost, what that is gonna cost. That's where we need it, and this is where we need it to start.
Right, if nobody wanted housing, and said, absolutely not, we don't want any housing there, that's okay, well then, we have to look at doing something else with that space. Um, when people are interested in housing and returning some tax dollars, you know, to the community, then that's a direction. Now we have to work with those developers who've approached us and see if it's possible. Get that study done, see if it can hold more tax dollars.
It's gonna depend on how much any of these ideas and things that she's able to get are gonna cost.
Well, I think that's.
That's gonna play a big part.
And who are we gonna be, continue to be informed?
Oh, of course.
Every city council meeting. Well, I mean, not, but.
Well, it was nice that you did this.
We could do this again.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
We need to do a couple.
I think what we need to do is ask the city manager.
Some people that know about it may get this kind of, would like to have it.
For a, um, timeframe for either feasibility study or cost study, or whatever title you wanna put on it. And maybe get back at the next meeting with how long that may take to get, so that we can give it to the public and say, we should have a feasibility study in. A month or two or three, or whatever it takes, and let's have another meeting so we can go over, these are our options from what you said, and this is the cost. You know, do we still wanna go in that direction, do we modify it? So, um, you know, maybe two meetings from now, you can kinda give us an idea of how long a feasibility study or cost study would take.
Right, I'll, obviously, I'll keep in close contact with council, I don't, I get very anxious so much to know where we're at, you know, as the content people, and see, you know, how much funding or cost and what our next step size. Um, when people communicate at the council meetings, we can also, um, we get your newsletters on the back of your water bill, we'll put updates on there, so you know where we're going.
And I, and I, I think when we kinda got it, we need to ask the same people, uh, to come back.
Yeah, we will do this again.
I don't know if they wanna, if we just wanna put it out there and you guys have noticed, or maybe if you sign a sheet, we'll send you a quick email, or you can come to the post office and send you a letter.
So, so that you, I heard that.
I think we're gonna get. Where we have a few different options, and what those costs are going to be for those options. Um, we can all get together again, uh, because I think that we need to get everybody together.
It might be a good idea to ask the kids what they want, to ask the teenagers, the young, because we are not as gonna enjoy it as much at one age, ninety-five, but. Younger people are the ones that are gonna be able to.
I'll ask my fourteen-year-old, he's gonna say, what, you want my opinion? I said, today, yes, today.
Well, anybody that's got younger, teeny, just kidnap them next time, right in there.
In the high schools, middle schools.
Sure, we have a school number here.
Yes, we do.
Could we, could, could, could we get a survey from the schools?
Yes.
You know, one, one thing we always say in the post office, what's the best way to chop down a forest? One tree at a time. This is tree number one, it's gonna take us a few more trees to get this, this is a start, so please be patient with the process. We all wanted this done yesterday, but it took us seven years to get it.
I think it's a good idea, like you mentioned, with two streets, so, might as well, I mean, if you got that.
We're gonna do it.
It's useless anyway, you might as well put that in a park.
And we own that corner, too.
To me, that makes the most sense, is put it all together.
Totally agree.
I agree.
You could utilize the floor parking.
Yeah, at least you could utilize that.
A hundred bucks I get to let people park in my area.
I, I know you, you work for people, I, I know you did something.
I was just gonna say, another way to kinda get, or you can put this on social media, again, like, kinda where our direction's going from here, from this meeting. And good, bad, and different, you're gonna get the people that hate everything, you're gonna get the people, but. Maybe, so people can't say we weren't engaged, or weren't even brought up, they can be engaged in it, and come to the next meeting if they weren't here today, I mean, they don't have to be here today to continue through the process.
Exactly, absolutely.
That's what we were saying, we want it to be something.
And I think the next time, we might get a bigger.
I hear it from lots of places.
We might need a gymnasium, yeah. We just haven't owned one.
That's what the Smith family originally donated that property for, was for kids.
Does anybody else have anything? I think we're pretty much, I, I wanna thank everybody for coming, please. This was a very positive dialogue, and everybody was so respectful for one another. I mean, usually the seven of us can't even keep that, keep that up. The fact that you guys all did it, right? I'm just kidding.
Ouch.
Thank you, everybody, great meeting. We'll get all the next together, together.